It is past at 5:15 time on Tuesday, November 19th, 5:15. I will call the meeting to order. Actually, we do a roll call, please.
Lindberg.
Here.
Nipper.
Here.
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
We have been given the agenda. I will make a couple changes to that. Moving other business to three and present to be heard, Amanda Brewer will move to four after the other business. And then under the other business, yeah, number E, just taking that out completely?
Yes.
I'm not quite ready for that one yet. Other than that, I don't think there are any changes. I would ask for anything else, Ashley? Is that it? That you know of?
Yeah.
With a smile. Okay, so I would ask for a motion to change, to change the, or to approve. Mr. Gunho from Cedar Rapids. Smokes, Richard.
I'm gonna get my one in.
Your one, and then you're gonna come on mute, are ya? All right. All right, motion by Peterson. We'll give Lindberg a second on that one, so.
I wonder what his connection is.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Richard, you got any conflicts? I'll get that out of the way while you're traveling, so. You good?
Never caught the deal.
Okay, anybody else? State them now or along the way. We will move into the consent agenda. Everything's under one motion, one roll call. We have minutes of the November 5th council meeting. Claims list 1326 and the amount of $87,630.75. I think everybody got a copy of those, the larger amounts. Any concerns, questions for anybody? Seeing none. We also have the expenditure revenue reports for the month of October of 2024. HMU sewer landfill reconciliation report for October of '24. Sheriff's statistical report for October of '24. And then we have the new fire department members. Keaton Jones. Daniel Tovar. Tovar?
Tovar.
Tovar? Daniel?
Yeah.
Okay. Troy Rinter. It's nice to see new members. Motion for the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Nipper, second by Shaven.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we'll move to other business. First one is Resolution 2585 determining the necessity in fixing a date for a public hearing in the matter of adoption of a proposed amended and restated urban revitalization plan for the Harlan urban revitalization area. It's a lot of stuff in there. I'm thinking we all read it. Gene, help us understand it. Or Ashley.
As previously discussed, shared with you, tonight is simply setting the public hearing for the meeting on December 3rd. And this contemplates the 2005 urban revitalization plan amended and restated in 2015. The primary component to this is one of the economic development tools that's available to us is tax abatement. And that's the primary item within this. Again, nothing you're acting on tonight other than setting the public hearing. And the two items that drew your attention to before and just want to point out again that is on page, I guess it's page 30 of your packet. I can't tell you exactly which page it is on that updated plan. But the eligible improvements are rehab and additions as well as new construction within the area. And again, that's within the maps at the end that are attached to this. That's not changing. And then it's the actual increased value for me, those improvements. The timeframe with this amended and restated would be for the next 10 years. That's the max timeframe allowable by law. And then those items that qualify as exemptions were just as we had previously stated in the previous plans. Residential would be any increase in valuation of $75,000 of improvements. And that would be for a period of five years would be abated. And then on commercial, it would be up to 100% for three years of abating. Those are the highlights that want to draw your attention to again. And tonight would be simply setting the public hearing. Public notice will be put in the paper. And then the hearing will be held at your next council meeting.
Any questions for Gene?
And we've worked with, again, Nathan Overberg, who's been our, with Al and Cooney. Both are urban revitalization consultants that we work with on these.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Murray.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is Resolution 2586 to vacate and dispose of city-owned real property contained within Block 4 in the original town of Harlan, Iowa. Information on that one, or added information on that one, Gene?
The next two items, this item as well as the next item on the agenda have been the area, the property just north of the North Seventh Street Bridge. Gone through all the proper required prescriptive steps. Deborah Dynison Moore is on the line once again. She's joined us for a number of meetings, so she has joined this evening. These are simply the final actions by council to have this transaction be finalized. The Resolution 2586, there were some, just one last minute change to that. Did you, did they get a printed copy, Ashley?
I can pass it around.
Okay, so I'll pull it up. And this is in working with the buyer's legal team. And I will pull it up here so you can draw your attention to it. It was recommended that on page two of this resolution, simply above this item here, which says this transfer is done, it was recommended the language be added, which, if she's passing it around, again, apologize for the 23rd hour change on this, simply saying it is further resolved that the city clerk and the mayor are authorized and directed to execute the purchase agreement and the quitclaim deed which memorializes this purchase and transfer. Otherwise, it's as presented in your packet. And then the next item following this would be the purchase agreements itself, which I'll highlight, I could highlight that as well.
We haven't, I'm guessing we haven't had any other public comments about that?
No, and the public hearing was, as you may recall, again, these transfers, vacation transfers, especially with an old area, Old Town Harlan has taken a number of steps. But the public hearing was held back on September 17th. And we hadn't received any objections or comments. So these are final steps of the transaction and transfer when dealing with public property.
And there's 5,000 steps.
Numerous, yes.
And the only change is what you read?
That's correct.
Yeah, we got it at like 5:10.
Okay.
So we called and we said that was the only change. So, thank you.
Anybody have any concerns or questions about that? Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2586.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Nipper, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Review and approve the purchase agreement between the City of Harlan and Deborah Dynison Moore. Anybody have any questions about that?
That's all the same, no change to that one.
Nope.
Same thing.
No changes. Again, as was previously agreed to, $1,500 for that land. As stated here, as noted, since it was public land, there's no real estate taxes having to be settled. And there are 60 days to complete this. And again, Deb's on the phone or Deborah's on the phone. Based upon, once we have these documents ready, we have a signed purchase agreement here from her. And then following the meeting tonight, we'll get it signed and executed and then follow the next steps in terms of a quitclaim deed and affidavit. And if she had any comments, or if you want any comments from her mayor, she's available here online if you'd like.
Do you have any more comments to make? Deborah?
Just to say, to say thank you for everything. And thank you for all your work on this. And thank you for giving me the opportunity and the ability to turn this property, which has been a liability to me, into a nice asset. And I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Welcome. Anybody else?
No questions.
Motion to approve the purchase agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, I'm gonna give that one to Shaven.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Review the HHPC downtown upper story and facade grant completion and award requests for 1122 Sixth Street in the amount of $6,429. This is Jerry Henshite's project there in the corner. Nice changes.
Sixth Street, yeah. You got all the documentation.
If you'd like, I can share a few comments. We're waiting to go for the history lesson, who remembers it as a gas station? I think we had that comment before, didn't we? Decades ago. Here's a couple of the four pictures. Again, this is also, yeah, this is Jerry's property. This is for this year's grant cycle. It's the Harlan Historical Preservation Committee. And this was approved, so has the fiscal year to complete this and has completed it. And then here's the new look. The primary component to this on the facade was the new doors. Significant improvement. It's also been opened up. And then the concrete work is pending with a drive entrance off of Sixth Street. All of the steps have been reviewed, or it's been inspected as well as the, you saw the paid invoices which were attached. And eligible improvement was for half or 50% of the property owner's equity or input to it. So another nice enhancement for this program.
Okay, so our motion to approve that. I'm out.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I know we're taking that, the next one out, but we're not even gonna do the minutes then? We don't need to receive the pile down? We're gonna wait on that probably too then?
Wait and do that all together. Hopeful that on the first meeting in December's agenda, and this contemplates the being able to move forward with getting a final set of construction documents for the Dream Playground Reimagine project, which would include the parking, the restroom. And Tim Miller, Tim's here, he's been very heavily involved in working with Snyder and Associates as well as Cunningham Associates, which is the selected provider of the playground equipment, which is Game Time. And it's ensuring between those two entities that we don't have any overlap or, we'll say dual services that would potentially increase cost for that engineering agreement. And just want to work through the fine details of that before presenting it to you. And then the intent would be that through the winter months, that Snyder could get a final set of construction plans that would allow for, if any, work grading and preparation for any infrastructure and utilities could take place when ready. And by the way, this was an expected part of the overall project. You know, the master planning, concept plans, you know, these public improvements and quality of life enhancements take some time. Yet this component to the project was expected.
Okay.
I won't be here to report on that in December, but I know the team here and Tim will be involved with that, so.
Tim.
We'll send you the Zoom link.
What's that?
We'll send you the Zoom link.
I can join by Zoom, yes.
Consultant. All right, then we'll move on to Resolution 2587, accept and approve the fiscal year 2324 annual financial report.
So it's a yearly report of actuals. So a lot of cities actually don't present it to their councils because it's actual numbers. So there's not much that can change, but it's always been our best practice that you guys have approved it by resolution, so.
And one item I would point out on this, that, you know, there's been a lot of numbers, a lot of detail on here, yet knowing that coming up, we're contemplating through our budget planning for this year and the next few years, is contemplating some debt. So, you know, also that on this report, which was sent out to you, is where it discusses the city's debt. And our geo-debt at this point is 2.23 million, or 223 million. Revenue debt, which is pretty significant, and revenue debt, that's general, or with your enterprise funds and generally that's all utilities, which is more significant, which we'll talk through at our meeting on Monday with our financial consultant. I just want to draw attention to that number of 2.23 is our geo-debt at this point. And that's less than, I believe it's about 15% of what our legal debt limit is. So we're very, very low. We have not borrowed for some time. We have some large capital projects in front of us. But that's also reported in this report. And you'll see this number next week as well. That was the only additional comment I wanted to share on the AFR.
Anybody who need to add anything, or questions for Ashley or Gene? And the next motion?
It's a lot of numbers to read, but it's presented well, so thank you for doing it.
It was a fun report to do. For the first time with no trading on it. We made it, so.
All right, so our motion for Resolution 2587.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg.
Aye.
Nipper.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we need to review city administrative recruiting and hiring, discussion only.
Where's the city administrator going? I'm just kidding.
A dark hole. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this was put on here simply to offer the opportunity as well as confirm from some of your planning and discussion. Specifically, I think tonight you want to just confirm that the dates that you've targeted are still the intended dates. And specifically, we know that you've set the deadline, which has been advertised as noon on December 4th. Following that, within the next day, you've requested that any of the application packets would be provided to all of you council members. So that's intended within the next day following the deadline. That following Monday, which was Monday, December 9th, at 5:15, is when you're intending to have a closed session to review those application packets. Just want to confirm that's still your intended date. And following that, you could also go into an exempt session, which would allow you to start having some planning discussion around what may be elements of how you want to make an offer as well as any possible negotiable items. And then Friday, December 13th, no ominous, nothing ominous with that date, but it is Friday, December 13th, was your suggested date to conduct interviews for whatever candidates you might select to come in person.
Okay. I did have a question on the email, the draft you sent out on the Tuesday, December 10th. Is that the times that we're selecting with those four times?
Those aren't the correct times.
Okay. Yes.
Because one was the half hour.
The initial draft scriber on that was yours truly, taking all your comments. And I wasn't quite adding the time slot, so it could really, it could begin as early as 8:00 or 8:30. I think those times would be negotiable. And you could further establish those even with that close, or following the closed session on the 9th.
Okay.
But I think the intent there is to make that morning, early afternoon interview timeframe.
A shoe in. Yeah, that's why I was, I didn't know if somebody was only getting a half hour and everybody else getting a little more time.
No.
That was. I didn't want to respond back, but I just was curious. I did have another, I wanted to double check on that timeframe.
And I would offer you, probably want to, if you, based upon how many candidates you bring in, but I would recommend you allow up to 90 minutes for any transition time. If one goes a little longer, yet that will be up to you when you decide to set those times. And again, you can further, you're not going to set up that schedule probably until you determine which candidates you have in coming in. Yet when candidates are applying, they're receiving a confirmation with those dates on there, but not a specific time yet.
Do we want to offer any opportunities on the 13th for any of us to give them any type of tour of the city if they'd like to beforehand, if they're traveling in?
I think that'd be nice.
I'll throw my hat and ring for volunteering that.
And again, that can be further confirmed with your exempt session and any discussion following that on the 9th.
Okay.
That if you've got one or two candidates that are very new to the area, haven't seen the community, definitely think that would be something you'd want to make available.
Okay. That all sound good as far as the dates, the times for everybody?
Yep.
No changes then from what we talked about?
And we did get it set up to where tablets come in there, they're getting that mail back with that information.
Yep, so we had one come in today and I had them sign for closed session.
Perfect.
And they also receive then those candidate dates that?
Yep, so I made a copy of the form for them and it has those dates on it. Thank you.
Good deal, ball's rolling.
Okay, so no action out of that then?
No discussion only.
Okay. Then I would say we would move on to present to be heard, Amanda Brewer. Dim the lights, put the spotlight on her.
Hi, Amanda.
Key the mic.
Cozy season.
Yeah, like just, I dug them out and I thought I'd start with this and then proceed into like the reindeer and smell. All right, so I'm just, can I give you a brief overview of the foundation? I don't know how, some of you guys are new to the council. And so the library, a foundation was created back when the library was built in 1980-81. And so their whole mission is to encourage gifts, endowment, and bequest to the library and support the development of library services and facilities for the community. It's an actual not-for-profit, so it's a complete separate entity from the library. Our members currently on that are Deb Garrett from Midstates Bank, Bill Early, Jim Zimmersen from Cheltenham State Bank. I'm on there as the secretary, but I'm a non-voting member. Tanya Brook, Andrew Sanchris, and Paul Simpson. Those three are from our actual board. We do have an open community position. So there's three community members. And then the other ones are the, basically the facility chairs from the library board. So that's currently how it stands. So just some background, in the last four or five years, things that they have done is they have, we have an annual scholarship program to try to promote people to go into journalism, English, things of those types. You can't actually get a bachelor's in library science, you can only get a master's in library science. So they've also provided new furniture for the library. That was somewhere between $18,000 and $19,000 project. They've provided some money to update our Patriot computers, add additional Patriot computers. And then we installed some circuited cameras around the outside of the library. So that's a little bit about what the foundation is. And the next thing we're gonna go into is just the books and beyond. And so what that is, is it's an outdoor revitalization project of the Harlan Community Library. So we, the library was built, it was started in 1980, was going to finalize in 1981. So we're gonna be hitting that 50-year mark and there's really not been much done on the exterior of our library. We do have some, we have concrete issues that's uneven in the front. We have very poor signage. We've got a brown building with brown letters. When I interviewed for the job, I drove around the block about six times trying to figure out where the library was, because that's where my GPS was taking me. So we've done a lot of really great vibrant things on the inside of the library over the last year, but it's time that we address some accessibility and safety issues on the outside, but also making a welcome space for our patrons and kind of increase some vibrancy on, quite honestly, public property. It needs to be done. It's 54 years by the time we get this done. Our goal is 2026. So we do have a committee of people, some volunteers and some board members that are gearing this up. So we have some, we've been working with Snyder, so we've got some renderings. And if you hit that next page, you can see what the proposed outside of the library will look like. Again, we're going to, I apologize because my lettering and notes on the picture looked white on my screen, but they are not on when I transferred it to a PowerPoint presentation. They're black. So I will just kind of point out some, some really important things. So obviously you can see the library has been whitewashed and we're going to lighten up some of the flashing around the library as well. The entrance that goes into the library is very cracked, uneven, it's been sanded down lots of times. There's a lot of upheating that goes, so it'd be great to get that done. We have a lot of markings on it from when, you know, like it's been uneven. We painted and sawed it down. As you can see, it's just not a brown box. We've tried to address some of the landscaping issues, the, like the Parks Department, they have a very large snow removal equipment, and, which is great because it's very efficient. But there's a lamp post and they, when they go around that in the wintertime, that chews up our landscaping every year. So what we've decided is to put like a walkway back towards the building right there, so it allows Tim and his team to go around that lamp post without disturbing any of our landscape. Again, it just saves us time and money every year from trying to recede that and get it to grow. So specifically, if we look at the southeast corner, this is going to be turned, you can see where that, that cut-in is right by that, that lamp post. And again, this is just renderings. Our idea is to have very low maintenance. I said if we can have no grass, I'd be really happy about that. But that's not possible. So we did put some trees back in. We want to do some lower trees. It's, it's all sun on the south side. So the architects said, and then engineers said, you know, you could create this really nice space, but if you don't put trees back in, like you, nobody's gonna use it because it's 100 degrees out there in the heat, which is very true. We used to have trees, we removed them because they outgrew the space. So those are some things that we're gonna be looking at, having them help us select them, knowing that we have this limited area, but yet we want to get some shade in there. We're specifically wanting to put in a music sensory area for children on that southwest corner. So that would be kind of like between the library and the alley by the library and the front door. And it's really great because we're gonna get rid of all the rock that's alongside the building and creates a walkable path that runs clear around the building. So there you can see some musical instruments. You can see some murals. We want to add a lot of vibrancy. We want to add a lot of vibrancy to the library, but we also know that our community as a whole is working to add art to Harlan and we wanted to really play off on that theme as well. If you click further, this shows the other side of the library. Again, once you're looking at, shows a new lighted signage so that it's very obvious that this is the Harlan Community Library. And then also a lot of our, the murals themselves will give off the feeling of a public library. They will have components in them that spurs people to think about reading and think about technology and inspire their imagination. So there won't be people having to circle the block six times looking for the public library. Right now, where those benches are is all gravel and that's where we have some picnic tables. So this will be a nice place for people to wheelchair accessible or people with walking issues to access or seating. We are also going to have charging stations, which are now are in the basement. I've been planning on this for like four years. So I did grants over the last three or four years when I could, so I have charging stations that are sitting in the basement that would pay for, with grant money that we're going to put outside. We have a lot of people, low-income people who cannot afford to pay for Wi-Fi. So they use our public Wi-Fi that's available. I mean, that is a service that our, our community needs from our library. We just need to make it more accessible and then we need to add charging stations because right now they're right by our door. So people like to sit right by the door, again, causing safety hazards. So then if we come in, we look at facing east, you can see there's like a, it looks like a single panel door. Right now, that is just a window right there. So at the library, once you get into the staff area, there's absolutely no exit except out the front of the staff area. So for safety purposes, if there is somebody who's aggressive at the front, if we have staff in the back, they have another way to get out of the library. Or if there's a fire and they're in the back and the fire's between them and the doors, because it's all sealed off back there. It'd be like being in this room and not having, I mean, the only exit would be to go like through here, but you could have an active shooter coming in the front door and you have to walk out. So we just, we want to change it and put in an emergency exit door for employees there. Again, we want to be able to create a nice thorough path. The grass there is called nomo grass. It's supposed to be mowed every six weeks. I don't know a lot about it. I just know that it's grass that gets longer and kind of flops over. It's low maintenance and we don't have a lot of it, so. But again, it's, our other issue that we have and Tim from Parks can identify, the very corner of that library, when they roofed that building, for whatever reason, they put a downspout just like hanging in the wind. And so we did dig it, so it goes underneath and distributes up to the street, but it constantly has no support, so it gets, you know, knocked off where it's attached to the building. So our idea is to create a little extra signage on that corner and kind of provide a frame around it to eliminate some of the ongoing maintenance we have with the downspout. And the next one, you can see that we're facing east now, so we're on the west side of the library, actually looking at the library. We had taken out those steps before and the engineering firm says you have to put steps back in. If you're going to do this, you have to do it right. Part of it is the flow of traffic from the library. We still do not want to open that other door. Right now, it's an emergency exit door because we, we still need all of our traffic to go through one door, in and out of one door. People can come out if it's an emergency, but we don't want people just coming in because they often will slip down in the basement and we don't know they're there. We have hard enough time with kids who go to the basement and come in the front door and we, and we find them downstairs doing kid stuff, you know? So we would put those steps back in while we are there, while we have all the equipment there to put concrete in and take concrete out. Out of the library's budget, we would pay to have the west side repaid. So it just makes sense to do it. Right now, it's, it's cracked, it's kind of, the surface is kind of pocked. Is it still usable? Could you grind it up? Yes, but if we're going to spend the, this, the money, we're going to do it right and replace this. And it makes it a lot more cost-effective since we already have the equipment there. And then you can see as we walk down further on that sidewalk right now, we're going to put in an outdoor storage time area. Again, just additional seating for people. I put a charging station back there. We're going to have to put some extra lights back there. We're going to add some extra cameras to the outside of the library, which we need anyway. Right now, we only have them on four corners. So we do have a little bit of, especially at our front door, where we have a little bit of site issues. And so that additional seating back there and again, just some nice small murals. This is just a rendering, so the final piece may not look exactly like this, but you can get the idea of what the library, what our vision is and how we'd like to see this project turn out by twenty twenty-six.
Amanda, I have a question.
Yes?
On the murals, are those going to be interchangeable or are they going to be painted on the building?
That's undecided, undecided then. We've thrown both ideas around. There's advantage to both of them. So we, at this point, we have, we've budgeted for either or.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So on the last page here, just some information for you guys. Approximate cost of this project is about two hundred thousand dollars. The Harlan Community Foundation will match dollar-for-dollar donations or grants up to a hundred thousand dollars. So they've already made that commitment, which they've never, I've never asked for that much money from them before, so it took them a little while to absorb it, but then they said, you betcha. So I'm really excited that all of this project would run through the 501(c)(3) into the foundation. And then what I'm anticipating is when it's time to cut checks, that those dollars, just like we do with other things that the foundation does, would move over into the library's trust account and checks would be issued and payments out of that. So that's a little, we talked a little bit about in our budgeting session about that. But right now, we are finalizing up marketing pieces. We are going to do a fundraiser kickoff with the chamber and just the community in general on Thursday, January twenty-third at five o'clock. It's going to be family-friendly, so we are basically having a family fun night incorporated into that. Fifteen, twenty minutes, thirty minutes at the most, it's really just an idea. We will have our display boards set up at the library and more information for people to donate. We've already set up online giving through our foundation, so that, that's already there so it can take place. We have some people on the committee, including myself, who are working on grant applications and know of ones that are coming up in twenty twenty-five. And then we will connect with area businesses and individual donors and host fundraising and awareness activities throughout the twenty twenty-five. Obviously, we're going to take in kind donations, so if we have a construction guy locally who wants to donate and do the demo or the tear out, we're definitely going to utilize those opportunities. Or if there's somebody who has materials and it's something that they want to donate, then we're, you know, we're going to look at that. You know, maybe it might be Peterson Manufacturing or up in Dennison who does benches or, so we're going to see what we can give for in-kind donations as well. We know that we have a generous community and which is, and we want to make sure that people realize that this is more than just Harlan. It's not Harlan's library, it's all of Shelby County's library. If they live in a town that's taxpayers, they're paying for the library. If they're living in rural Shelby County, they're paying for the library. It's everybody's library. So we're hoping that we can get that ownership and so everybody understands that it's not just for this town. We have a lot of usage outside. Came up with some different giving levels that people can do and our usage at the library just continues to go up. So I think the, I mean, some of the project is quote-unquote fun, but a lot of it addresses accessibility issues and construction issues that we have. One of the things that I didn't talk about is around our air conditioning units, which get a lot of after-hours traffic. But we're going to put up some type of screening so people can't get in there and walk, because there's lines that run all over in there, so they can't get in there. There's a variety of things that camera activity picks up out by those units. So, and they're already aging, they don't, they don't need any additional stress on them. Can I answer any questions? I encourage you to come on January twenty-third for our kickoff. Be great to have all the council members there. I know that that was supposed to be the night they were going to have a board meeting at HMU, but I think things might be changing there, it looks like. So we, and that way you can see all the very large pictures. Jean can also share the slide with you if you want to spend more time looking at the pictures. Feel free to email me at the library if you come up with a question or you're like, oh, I think my business wants to support this. Would love to entertain and talk about getting pledges for the project. We're really excited about this.
Excellent information.
I'd say we have about five thousand already donated over the last four years for the project that we knew was going to happen at some point. Just didn't know when. All right, nothing like that, guys. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it.
Somebody's got to give us the last report. You will all be so excited, I'm sure of that. As one, as one works towards an end date, which mine is coming up, on one hand, you might think that it, you know, things are winding down and I couldn't tell you, it's probably just the opposite, things have been quite active. And I think it's a combination of things of everyone, I think our community and our, our team as well as our elected officials want to keep seeing things happen and progress. I also think it's compounded a little bit by the fact that people know that I am leaving, so it's like, let's be sure Jean's aware of this, let's try to push this through or create awareness for it. So it's been, been quite active. So bear with me as I give you a host of updates here. It will cover quite a gamut. First, we recently, you approved an agreement to have the wooden poles expected of some of our sports complexes and just as of today, Tim updated me that, not planned, but just, just happened, that one of our wooden poles at North Park, that wasn't in one of the, EXO, who's the company, has not come on site yet. We expect them in the next few weeks. Yet, just doing normal maintenance and spraying, one of the wood poles, a light, just a light pole down at North Park, it was, was our tool cat, our tool cat bumped it or ran into it, just doing spraying and it went over, dismantled the pole, broke it. And I think you, what was it?
We estimated about twenty-five percent of that wood was good.
Was, yeah.
Where it snapped off of the ground.
Hopefully that's not a...
It didn't look real, real good when we looked at it and said, okay, maybe we need to enter into this EXO, have them inspect all of our light poles in all of our parks. The dog park has three and the dog park, Potter has another four there, so I haven't had a chance to go around all the parks, but I'm guessing fifteen to twenty more poles. But I think it's a good insurance to know what the conditioner poles are in. Because this was a pole that looked good, was just surprised and then when it snapped, you just looked at the base and said, woo-hoo, there's not much there. And actually, the guy's mulling said, I don't know how we haven't knocked it over because it, you know, just, yeah.
So maybe some additional poles inspected, wanted to provide a timely update on that.
Do we have any idea when EXO is planned on?
I'm sorry?
Or the HMU? Do we have any idea when they're planning on?
I've not spoken on them recently.
Originally hoping this, the end of November here. Just haven't heard.
I'm not, you know, Dr. Joe today, but we didn't talk about this agreement, but should be happening soon.
Perfect, thank you.
Should be happening soon. The River Access Project, again, for the water enthusiasts. We've had a flurry of communications with our engineer over the past couple of days as well as this afternoon. And what all that means is likely our letting date is being pushed another month. And the result of that may be that the clearing and grubbing of trees and other vegetation, because of the protected species or bat, protected species, that has to be done between October first and March thirty-first, we just came up with the idea this afternoon that that line item or component of the project, we may strip out of the DOT letting process and have that accomplished this winter. Once again, the funds are there with our two grants. Due to some of the changes with some more cutting on the actual riverbank that was requested by the DNR floodplain folks, that's what's creating some of those twenty-third-hour changes, so. That's an update on that. Tim's been kept up to date, I'd say even more closely than the last month or so. Some timing items doesn't impact from a financial standpoint. Our home warranty program company, which is HomeServe or Service Line Warranties of America, I've shared at the last meeting that we had been attempting to arrange a informational meeting and opportunity to converse with a few of our local contractors and the HomeServe Company. We did have that session last week, a few city staff attended and two local contractors and two representatives from HomeServe. Believe it was a very productive sixty to seventy-five minute, very fluid, open conversation. And the end result of that is, was that the two local contractors have been provided follow-up, follow-up information that if they want to further consider becoming a certified contractor with HomeServe, that they provided them the bare minimum requirements to do so, as well as offered to take care of any expense to get their business as well as up to two of their techs certified with them at no expense. So thought again, it was a productive conversation. Unfortunately, wish that would have happened a year ago and I believe HomeServe and the feedback we've offered is that their onboarding and recruitment of local contractors could have been better. And we've respectfully provided that feedback.
Has there been any issues with them themselves replacing any systems?
There have been seven, seven or eight claims, which provided that last report. Again, the contractor they're using is actually out of net, outside of the service area, but since we haven't, but there's been no issues with that contractor. In fact, there was a four of the ratings provided so far, it's been a four or five-star No issues I'm aware of with, with that contractor for the work they're doing for HomeServe. Wanted to circle, close the loop on that for you. Speaking of the sewer and wastewater, a couple of other items. Once again, phase one of our rehab project, that sewer lining project, keep in mind, that's over twenty-two thousand feet of sewer lining. As I reported before, that's close to four miles of going to be upgraded and rehab lining. The first phase is done. Appreciate the public's kind of patience and cooperation as we work through that first phase. We don't have a tentative date, likely going to be in December, first part of the year when that lining, the lining phase takes place. And with the change of seasons, it's that time of year with, in which our UV or ultraviolet unit that does disinfection is the final step of the treatment process, that's been shut down for the winter season. Do the winter maintenance and that'll be ready to go again next spring. Do the winter maintenance and that'll be ready to go again next spring. We will likely have a special meeting next week with our apron expansion project at the airport. This was that project that we submitted and have been, got the go letter on from the Federal Aviation Administration. The deadline to have the engineering agreement to FAA is December.
First?
Uh, December 4th. Yet the next, long story short, there may be just a very brief special council meeting because that has to be to the FAA and approved by the commission prior to then. Yet that is moving along nicely. And hope to have that complete by the end of this week so we can get a short meeting scheduled next week. That could be by Zoom and we would simply need a form from our, from our council. Had spoken about the River Access Project and only have one quick item for show and tell. This is one of, and Todd, I may need your help here. This is an interpretive panel that will be installed near the River Access Project. It's outside of the scope of the project. Yet I believe there are five panels.
Yeah, there are five panels, like Golden Hills RC&amp;D. You'll see similar panels out in front of the Shelby County Historical Museum. They've been there for a few years now. There are panels that we helped, you know, put together the funding and they're spread throughout our area. You know, think of the, the byway and they're trying to spread them across different areas of the byway to tell the story of our area as people are traveling around. So, yeah, I mean, they're, they look great and are informative. They hold up really well. That, like I said, that one's been there for a few years and it, it looks like it was put there a month ago, so.
So the panel, the interpretive panels and the bases were delivered to Shelby County area because there's one for Dynas and Prairie, I believe, one for the Nishna Batna. And we determined it could be placed at the trailhead with the water, water access. I believe one made with the courthouse is another feature. And I forget a couple of other areas.
Yeah.
And the base and the interpretive panel, Tim actually met them last week and those are in storage right now for once the River Access Project is done. And then the bases are intended to, to weather and rust and provide a historic rustic look to them. So be another, another nice enhancement when that project is done. Want to recognize we have an anniversary as well as a new employee. We have a new employee and Amanda's still here. Nope, she left. She's been quite diligent and quite selective to achieve another adult services librarian. So Noah Finkin, she started November 13th as a new employee. So congratulations and welcome, as well as Stephen Simpson, one of our operators in the street department. His one anniversary is November 13th as well. So just in time for him to endure and kick off his second snow season. And I did say that four-letter word, so I expect it will probably snow here in Iowa and Western Iowa and Eastern Iowa sometime this winter. I attended the open house last night that the chamber had at the new emergency room. Very, very, very well attended. If you've not been in there, when you do, it will be, I think, an awesome experience. Hopefully not because you're visiting there for medical reasons, but just to go in and, and take a peek around. Yet, as I had the opportunity to be there last night, it certainly provided reason for me to pause and appreciate all the assets that we have in this community in Shelby County. I speak and we speak, Todd speaks. Our healthcare system, our educational system, certainly two hallmark assets that make this a very attractive area. And in the seat that I've sat in for a handful of years now, it's the cooperation and collaboration with these other partners that have this desire to be not just, not just really good, but excellent and strive for that all the time. Our utilities partner, our chamber and industry partner, our partnership with Shelby County, law enforcement, secondary roads, the Board of Supervisors. Again, the hospital, just, I, I know that the next person that sits in this seat, that you as a council and the other organizations will support, this seat and our city council, because we're, we're one of many players that try to do the right thing, make this a very attractive place and have, you know, continue striving for the future. So I just wanted to share those thoughts from Gene that came to me last night with the emergency visit for the open house, not for any other healthcare reason. And since this, this is my final meeting, I did prepare just a couple of thoughts and I, well, I'll simply read this because I want to ensure I nail it. And mostly want to thank our community. Now, I was elected mayor. I never thought I'd ever be mayor here, but who'd have thunk? And so I appreciate the community having the confidence in me back in 2011, 2012 when I was elected mayor. So I thank them for that. And I, I thank you as a council and previous council members and elected officials for taking a bit of a gamble when you offered me a position to step into this administrator role. And I'm so grateful and appreciative for that. I, I believe that we, I say we, not just the elected officials, but we collaboratively have made some improvements. And I believe we've made it and I've made it a little bit better than I found it. And there's so much more to do and so much more to grow into and change. But I truly believe I'm leaving it, and I think I've served what I needed to serve here. Yet to be in a good position, place to, to move forward. I can't wait to come back when a new person's here with new faces, but to come back and, you know, have family here, this will always be home. And, you know, see the changes, see things like the playground, River Access, see new team with the law enforcement, the library projects. I just can't wait, when I do come back, to appreciate and celebrate, celebrate those things that maybe I was familiar with or had a little bit of a hand in to make happen. So this is always going to be home, so I want to say thank you from, from me and my family. Me and my family, family is so important. So I've been blessed throughout all my career to, I say, live a value, a value-based life, which my family's always been of, of real value to me. So I'm, I'm going to the eastern part of the state because of family and can't wait to spend that time with grandkids and be called bapa and grandpa. So, and that's it for my final report. Think, think I did all right. So I appreciate all of you and thanks for this opportunity. Any questions for me or comments?
We still can't talk you into staying.
Don't believe so, no. The balls are rolling and all things are formalized, so not happening.
Thank you for that.
In all sincerity, I can't wait for the next chapter for you all.
Sharon, I think you've eaten up ramen over the last two weeks. Stay in the store ready, you're ready to go.
Yeah, we're slowly cleaning out the, you know.
Pantry.
Less food we have to move, so, yeah. Ramen noodles and goulash and have been a staple fare at the Geddes House right now.
Well, from my standpoint, thank you for everything you've done for me and my term and stuff on council.
We bet.
Very, very, very good to work with. So we will miss you, but we are happy for you too. So it's always.
Never, never goodbye, see you later.
We'll be later. Best of luck.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Geddes for his last report?
Sign him off, get him out of here.
Thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under my report, I'm just going to make a few comments about the guy sitting in the chair. Trust, courage, grace, dedication. The guy that's involved and not just his job, you know, we, we hit the home run on this guy. It's hard to find people that want to do what he does that come from out of here. We're lucky enough to find someone that, you know, we always, I go back and took a chance. We didn't take a chance. We, but we needed someone we could trust. We needed to build some trust in that chair and we built a lot of trust and he did. He did that and took a lot of courage to do some of the things he's done. You know, a lot of courage. We've all had a few sleepless nights sitting up here making a couple of decisions. I can't imagine how sleepless nights Gene Geddes has had in the last eight years. Good things, bad things, you know, tough things, not bad things, just tough things. He's always made decisions based on us, not him. And that's, that's why it takes a lot of courage, you know, just to, just to be the guy that we call our city administrator. And I know we'll place the person, but not, not Gene Geddes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on to Shelby County Chamber and Conference in this, with Todd.
Yeah, I'm going to follow this all up. Few items, as you have seen, the courthouse Christmas tree is in place. It's looking really good up there. So just a reminder that Saturday, November 30th, from 5 to 7. So that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It's also Small Business Saturday. That's when we'll have the official lighting ceremony. I keep looking at the long-range forecast and it keeps getting colder and colder on that day. So I'm hoping things turn around before we get there. But we'll have hot chocolate and cookies just in case it doesn't for, for everyone. And weather permitting, we'll have one of the Hanson House vehicles out there too for the kids to ride around the square. So Saturday, September 7th is going to be kind of a busy day for the chamber. We'll be visiting Irving, Elkhorn, Irwin, Panama, Portsmouth and Tennant with Santa Claus. So all the kids in those towns can come out and see him. There's also going to be the stroll at Prayer Rose. Participants will be at the West Campground. So after you load up on Thanksgiving and go for a stroll the following Saturday and try to work a little bit more of that off. And also on that same date, no, I have one more. Oh, not finding it. Oh, well, maybe I didn't turn it up. Wanted to just remind everybody about the West Central Program that's going on, both sides of, of the program. You know, they do have families that are looking to be adopted. The way the program is timing out this year is you would adopt a family, you would drop off the gifts for the family on December 11th. We'll be hosting that out in the atrium at, at the chamber and the families will pick stuff up on the 12th. And families who are considering it, they can still apply to be adopted up to December 7th. So keep an eye on the newspaper if you're thinking about adopting a family. If you've got friends or coworkers that, you know, might, might consider applying, make sure they get it done by December 2nd. Couple of congratulations, KNOD just celebrated their 45th anniversary of being here in Harlan. In Monogram just celebrated a 20th year anniversary. So that was kind of cool. And then finally, Santa in the cabins will be on Thursday, December 12th from 5 to 7. So we'll have Santa pretty much everywhere we can have Santa over the next four weeks for the kids to come and see him. So that's it from the chamber.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, sir.
I guess we're not done with, he's going to change his hat to HMU. Mr. Geddes, back to you. Joe couldn't make it tonight, so.
Joe had reached out mid-afternoon and passed along a couple of updates that I graciously offered to, certainly sent a pass along. And the two projects at HMU continues to make great progress and Joe's been excellent about reporting out the raw water system. The key item there is with the, the deep well, which Cohoy Pump is continuing to drill. And I just find this amazing. So I'll pass along a few of the stats as to where they're at with that. Again, this is the deep well and they have some equipment issues, but they've continued drilling 24 hours a day. They've reached 192 feet of depth. I think the last time Joe reported, it was just over 100 feet. So it's been some slow going for a while. They're going through a lot of clay. They should be back up and running hopefully with a night shift and drilling 24 hours a day for the next 10 days. And by that time, oh, excuse me, then, yeah, by that time, getting to final depth of 315 feet is the target of depth. But at approximately 227 feet, I feel like I'm an expert, but this is, we're just regurgitating what Joe's sharing, that they're, based upon, again, the formations and material, at 227 feet is when they expect to get beyond the heavy clay and getting into some, it seems, into some of the easier drilling, which is through some, some rock and shale. So should go quicker then. But they hope to have it all drilled and cased and grounded by Thanksgiving with that deep well. And then on the other project, the overhead underground, a lot of the focus with Burns Electric, which has been the main contractor, has been in the alley on the east side between the bank and the east side businesses. Though all those trenches have been backfilled and the conduit's in. Some wires will start to pull. And then there's some old vaults that they have yet to pull out in the alley area. Those will get pulled out and that'll get resurfaced. But progress is being made there. Just appreciate the public's patience for that project as well. But get all the wire and get some of the old equipment out of there. And that's Joe's update.
Could I add one thing? We, HMU will also be having their customer celebration on December 10th from 5 to 7 at the vets. Good old pizza, ranch chicken.
With Santa Claus and the sleigh again, hopefully.
I don't think we'll have another meeting before the end of Santa. Yeah, and Santa will also be there.
Well, for the scene of the new sleigh, bring a couple of extra guys to pick it up because the high school kids' building isn't one I think is a little bit heavier than the one we use now.
Okay. Shelby County Sheriff's update. Do you want Gene to give you a report too?
What's that?
Do you want Gene to give you a report too? Give him all the chances he can to speak, so.
Use them all up. First, I'd like to introduce Deputy Ethan Bierley. Just started with us last week. So he was a certified officer with the Oregon Police Department and filled one of our two open positions. So you'll see him around town and the county, if you're out in the county. We've seen some of the guys wearing cowboy hats, so we'll address that. The ISSAE, which is Iowa Sheriff's and Deputy Association, approved the use of cowboy hats for the daily class week uniforms. So you'll see some of the guys wearing those. Probably won't see this guy wearing one. Most other guys are wearing them, so.
But you have one, right?
I do not. When they mandate it, then I'll have one. I'm not a cowboy. For the month of October, we had six accidents, 28 traffic citations, 87 warnings, 12 arrests, no criminal mischiefs, four thefts, 321 contacts, six welfare checks, eight residential or business alarms and two animal complaints. Questions for us?
I would just comment because, again, I, last time I could comment, right? Following our budget discussion last week, did reach out to Sheriff Gross, just putting, trying to get a head start with it. Don't expect anything beyond what's in the agreement for our 2080 in terms of that annual increase, can't exceed 3%. He doesn't expect that or is not anticipating that. So, yet might be, might be up to that 3%. So that's probably a number that Ashley will start with. But I know the counties, from the discussion this morning, they were thinking later, later in December, 1st to January to really get deeper into their budgets. So there may be some changes from the sheriff at that point. And as always, appreciate the partnership and what they do for us.
Welcome aboard Deputy Bierley.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome back.
Thanks for training Deputy Tibbetts. Good hands.
All right. Anybody, any public comments? Anybody up here, any comments? Richard, you still driving?
Still there.
Just a reminder that there is a going away party for Gene on Friday, this Friday, the 22nd, starting at 5:00.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, everybody.
Thanks, Richard. Thanks, Dave.